Good evening, everybody. I make it go on seven o'clock, so let's make a start. Long time no see for everybody. Item one, Chair's announcements. We have no members of the public present, so I'm not going to run through that. We know how to leave the building in case of a fire, et cetera. So on to item two, apologies for absence.
I don't have any due.
Thank you. Item three, declarations of interest. Anyone anything to declare? Nope. Okay. Item four, minutes of the last meeting from the 17th of June 2025. Is that a correct record of how we discuss matters? Thank you. Public question time. We do not have any members of the public present. Note, we do have a green sheet for this meeting, quite significant changes. Has everybody seen it? If not, no problem. We can pause for a few minutes. Everyone seen it? Good. So on to item six. Old Chase Farm, Hyde Lane, Danbury, Chelmsford, Essex. The officers, can you present the reports? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Evening, evening, members. As Chair noted, there are some more significant changes on the green sheet, and I do want to flow through those just to give members a flavour of what's happened quite recently. So just in terms of the proposal, I've highlighted it in yellow just to highlight that is the obvious change. So the printed report was for 21 security columns with lights. That has subsequently been reduced down to 10. Now, the green sheet goes through relevant paragraphs where that numbers point is dealt with, but also expands upon certain issues, relevance, in order to try and explain the rationale, just to give the story as to why that has happened. So the green sheet is a little bit more extensive than usual just because those are references to the number of columns in particular. I'm happy to pick up any comments on those in due course. But just to highlight, the proposal before us is for 10 security columns, not the 21 as printed, and obviously not the 25, which is currently on the site at the moment, but I'm going to go into that shortly. So... Just to give a flavour of context here, obviously the report runs through where we are in Chelmsford, so an area between Bicknaker and Danbury, eastern side of the borough. We have Hyde Lane noted on this plan. This just shows you where the red line application site is. So roughly kind of a V shape. Old Chase Farm, they're shown in red. And just a few markers just to lead into the rest of the slides. We have blue dots noting the residential properties to the west along Hyde Lane and the orange dot which denotes the petrol filling station depot along Hyde Lane as well. This slide gives, well, it certainly gives a flavour of what's happening on site at the moment. Just for reference, the blue dots there are shown as residential properties and the orange dot shown as the depot to the west. Sorry. So this slide just gives a flavour of the current use of the site, which is storage of containers. The aerial photography clearly demonstrates a number of containers within that red zone. And the left-hand picture photo just shows the stacking of those containers, you know, well, generally to a maximum of three high as witnessed on site. And you can just see evidence of one of the columns shown in that photograph. As the report notes, they're all eight metres in height and slim design with LED lighting on top. I'm now going to run through the explanation of where we got to. So both the original report and the current report as amended tells a story of 25, well, this is a retrospective application, obviously. So we have 25 columns in situ, 25 illuminated columns. So during the course of the application, we had a number of representations from local residents and obviously parish council had comments also. So as part of that dialogue with the applicant, those lilac-coloured columns that you see on the western edge that are closest to the residential properties, those were deleted from consideration with a commitment that they would be subsequently removed from site. Hence, you'll see the reference within one of our informatives that those are to be removed. Just a gentle reminder to the applicant, they are to be removed through that informative. What the changes deal with that you'll see on the green sheet is that the remaining columns, which were 21, basically following review of proximity of some of those columns to particular trees around the site. So we've got one to the north, woodland area to the east, and a row along the southern boundary as well as some more centrally. Those yellow ones are now not part of the consideration this evening. So those 11 columns are removed from the description and that's reflected within the green sheet amendment. So today's consideration will be in relation to the green, sorry, the blue dots, which are 10 in number. You'll see there's two on the northern boundary, two more on the other northern boundary, but mainly located centrally within the site. So that key takeout from that is that we're considering 10 this evening. Just a note on that review. Obviously, this is a precautionary approach taken by the applicant at relatively short notice that we felt that further consideration is needed in relation to potential bat activity in relation to the trees that may, they may be useful commuting of bats in relation to their movement east, west, north, south. So I would like to note that it is a cautionary approach in terms of their removal. As the report notes, the applicant still intends to go to keep those 10 lighting columns in some form, but is committed to do further works in terms of potentially lowering the column heights, for example, or further works on the actual LED lights that are on those columns in order to reduce the lighting spillage from those to levels that could be deemed acceptable to not have an adverse impact on bats commuting along those routes or in close proximity to those trees. So that's the rationale there. We're dealing with 10 this evening. Obviously, members can debate the principle of 10. Just to give a brief explanation of the lighting diagram that was submitted with the application. Obviously, members didn't have this diagram in their pack because it's particularly difficult to read, but I'll just explain the issue we're dealing with in terms of. The left-hand diagram deals with what you'd normally, what you would expect, certain number of lumens from a light source, and that is generally reflected on the ground as an equivalent, as denoted here, lux level. So the lighting measured at the surface per square metre. Obviously, once you dissipate from that main source, those lux levels decrease. So centrally, they're greater and as you move outward, they decrease. What the diagram on the right-hand side shows is obviously the site location plan, the roughly L shape here, roughly T shape. We've got the blue dots denote the position of the columns to be considered this evening. And obviously, you can see roughly concentric bands around those in dark blue then green. So what the dark blue ones show, and I'll show you in more detail on the next slide, but just as by way of an introduction, the dark blue ones would, well, they do show 10 lux spill and then that drops to five lux and then that drops further to 0.5 within the lilac. And then as you go further away from them, it goes down to 0.2 on the red diagram. Just in terms of, I'll pick up a specific so that members can see exactly what I'm talking about. So these are two northern columns at the northern extremity of the site. You'll see columns dotted in the blue circles and as you'll see those banding, roughly shown as contours that follow the circular nature of the light source. So you're looking at 10 lux to that extent. Then obviously, as you go further, five lux and then 0.5 and then 0.2. Just to give a flavour of what we're dealing with, you know, you would expect that moonlight, for example, is generally around one lux if you were standing out there with a light meter reading. So whilst the lumens of the LED source are relatively high, relatively high at source and directly beneath those, obviously you can see that the spill at 10 and 5, you know, several metres out from those, you know, is something that you probably would expect from streetlight columns, tantamount to that. So... So that's an explanation of how we've dealt with the light levels and hopefully gives members some confidence in terms of officers dealing with this application. There are some conditions, condition threes amended because obviously the application has been amended, but basically there's a commitment to reduce the tilt of any lighting bulbs to horizontal. And that's a recommendation from various government documents that, some of them installed at different angles to serve different purposes, but once you reduce the tilt to horizontal, you then focus that lux more centrally below the column itself. So that reduces spill. And also you can install shields that surround the light source itself in order to reduce the light spill. So the diagram that I showed previously was an indicative, an indicative diagram, which is still relevant to the 10 being dealt with this evening. And there's a commitment from the applicant to, well, basically commit to what conditions two and three say on the officer report. So conclusion is that, based on what we have this evening, is that the impact on the rural area is acceptable, the impact on ecology is acceptable, and the impact on neighbour amenity is acceptable, hence why we recommend an approval today. I do have various other reserve slides, Chair, but obviously didn't want to front-load those at the moment in case we do have questions. So I've got various other slides that we can show. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Armstrong, as the ward member, would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, all right, thank you. Okay, let's go. Thanks. So a few things. On the plans, just to the south of the site, across the field, there's a protected lane and a listed building. And just to the north, there is also the Hyde, which is a historic, a house of historic importance associated with the vineyards there. There are still three blue columns by trees, two to the north and one towards, by the ditch to the south, which I don't think have been considered. One of the big things with this application is it doesn't consider the use of the site as a container site in any of its lighting analysis. Therefore, should you stack three containers high immediately next to one of these columns, there would be reflected light that's not shown in any of the reports and that would increase the amount of light spilling to the neighbouring properties and to the rural area, because it is in the rural area dramatically. Actually, it's very interesting in the report written for the lighting plan, none of the bright yellow or orange containers were placed within the photos and they lovely used the nice navy blue ones that blend into the sky and the dark night. So that is a comment, I would say, that the report possibly doesn't reflect the accurate usage of the site. And I think that has a material effect. I was very shocked by the green sheet today. It differs the application fundamentally and is then not reviewed and supported by any of the documents. Obviously, it was 21, we're now down to 10, which is less than half. I know they said they'll go back. It's based on the ecology, which hasn't been considered, I don't think, properly. If this was to come as a new application rather than a retrospective application, we may have considered the ecology, maybe installing bat boxes or planting hedge rows between the neighbours, which would actually boost biodiversity and provide additional screening from the lighting. A request I'm sure the neighbours would be appreciative of. It isn't within the neighbourhood plan and as a development area, as it is expanding its increased usage. It's really positive that the applicant is actually now coming forward. So we've, this site has a series of active enforcements at the moment. This application and another retrospective application currently going through the system. I'm very grateful they're coming forward. I want them to continue to come forward and hopefully there is a positive route here because we want them to do well. However, I'm not sure this application considers all of the relevant factors yet to accept it. So, final thing on this. The application has the planning boundary immediately around the certificate of lawfulness. However, during the applicant doing these works, they were doing other works and the spoil from both sets of works were placed outside the planning boundary. This isn't reflected within this planning application. And should the works have extended beyond the remit into the rural area, including some of the other retrospectives being part of these works to install these columns, it would have been nice for that to have been ratified within this retrospective application as it was directly associated with the works of installing these. I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Shall I just come back on any of those points?
Thanks, Chair. There's a few points to go through, so I'll try and take them, well, probably in theme, in theme order rather than chronologically, if I may, councillor Armstrong. So if I start with the certificate of lawfulness. So any, obviously this application is dealing with lighting columns only. It's not related to the use. As alluded to in the officer report, the certificate of lawfulness is in effect quite wide-reaching in its potential uses. Obviously, it was for storage of caravans, but the storage of containers, there's a question mark over, or the question for local authorities is that a material change of use? Now, we've taken legal view on this, you know, I've dealt with part of the history a number of years ago as part of public inquiries. So the councillor are content that there's not a change of use from the certificate. And bear in mind, just to bring in some of the comments of councillor Armstrong, bear in mind that a certificate is not a planning permission, therefore there's no restriction on its areas of use, for example. And the officer report touches upon the reasons why we don't restrict areas of use on the columns either. But the certificate of lawfulness is quite wide-reaching in that respect. In terms of what can go within there, because there was a comment about light spill, obviously the lighting report deals with, as I showed, the diagrams deal with an example from the source of the column. Now, bear in mind that, yes, the containers may change in number, they may change in colour, for example, but that's not something that can be controlled by this permission. Councillor Armstrong's point is about kind of almost the albedo ratio, the reflection, for want of a better word, from those containers. That's not something that could be specifically controlled because it would go beyond the means of this application to do so. Now, if the point is that that has not been considered appropriately, then there is a flip to that coin in that, in some cases, containers surrounding a column will actually block light spillage, you know, beyond the boundary of the container. So there is a flip side to that argument. But it's like what we can't do is control the number of containers, even their location, even their height to a certain degree because they are stacked, they are stacked three high at a maximum at the moment. That's because of logistical reasoning. But I think that, you know, there's only so much that can be considered within a lighter import, especially when, you know, there's so many variants to this site. I think that if we step back from the technicalities of something like that as a variation, I think what the officer report also notes is that planning officers have visited this site during night time hours on two separate occasions. And if members that live in this proximity, you know, you can witness the, basically the worst case scenario at the moment, which is the 25 lights which are not approved. So there are, this application deals with a reduction of that number as well as tilting difference, as well as shielding to bring the levels down as per the diagram. So I think that, you know, there is a mismatch in terms of what is perceived at the moment and what that will look like ultimately. So there's various things to consider on that point. In terms of, in terms of the ecology, I think that it's worthy to note that the applicants have obviously recognised some of those comments, particularly from parish council and representations, and they're willing to look further into that in terms of those columns that we perceive to be within close proximity of trees. In terms of the specific tree point noted by councillor Armstrong, I think, you know, we have audited those and are comfortable that the spill levels are acceptable in terms of the northern ones as well as the central one. So what has been deleted, I would say, is a precautionary approach. In some cases, you know, 0.5 lux spill onto a potential canopy of a tree, you know, could be debatable whether a bat would move along there. But as I say, the applicant has taken a precaution approach, hence we down to 10 today. In terms of protected lane heritage comments, we do have a section on that within the officer report. Bear in mind that, you know, there is a proximity, there is a fair distance, you know, south and north of properties noted by councillor Armstrong. So as I say, officers have been out during night time hours. They're content there's no impact upon those heritage assets. So, you know, that is outlined within the officer report. I'm not sure, I think that was, in terms of enforcement cases, I can't comment on enforcement cases in terms of this application. Councillor Armstrong has already noted in public forum that there are various cases of different natures. You know, we're not dealing with, well, this is a retrospective application. So we are dealing with retrospective application in part on this one, but I wouldn't comment upon any other potential breaches around the site within this forum. In terms of the neighbourhood plan, that document is also commented upon in the officer report, specific reference to the lighting policy. I would acknowledge councillor Armstrong's point, this is not a zone designated for redevelopment. We would accept that. This is, in its simplest terms, these are ancillary structures that go hand in hand with an operation that is lawful. So, you know, I don't see this as something that, you know, becomes a redevelopment site just by the nature of, if members were to approve the lighting columns. Lighting would be inevitable in terms of the interaction of such a site through its lawful use, potential night time movements, et cetera, because the nature of the certificate of lawfulness that exists on the site. So I wouldn't necessarily buy into that this is contrary to any redevelopment proposals because that's not, that is not what we're dealing with here today. If there's anything I've missed there, Chair, I'm happy to take any other queries. Thank you.
I think you have covered everything. Are you happy that everything's covered there?
Yeah, just on the neighbourhood plan, obviously Danbury has its own neighbourhood plan and its own dark skies policy for the rural area. I know we mentioned the neighbourhood plan on development side, but as a lighting policy, Danbury has an approved neighbourhood plan for the rural area. I would also say that when we do planning applications for industrial units and consider side lighting for building, reflection off structures is normally considered. I know these are temporary structures, but these are temporary structures as part of the on-the-ticket-named box of the site intended use. And therefore, I don't necessarily think it's inappropriate to want sort of a lighting report that directly reflects, pardon the pun, its named and websighted use of the site. So that was the only point on that.
So if you'd like to come back on with that.
Just on the neighbourhood plan point, obviously as a main plan, it does have the same weighting as, well, it's part of the development plan, so, you know, we acknowledge its weighting. Obviously, you know, when you read through those policies which are quoted within the officer report, members just need to be mindful that, obviously, you know, if members are looking to refuse an application, we'd need to show kind of adverse harm rather than just a presence of lighting. So, you know, the bar, you know, would be slightly different in terms of the local plan policies versus the neighbourhood plan. That's not diminishing what neighbourhood plan says, but obviously we just need to be careful of that slight tension that the bar in terms of adverse impact, you know, needs to be considered under kind of DM29 in terms of the local plan policy. In terms of the adequacy of the report, I'm not sure officers can necessarily agree. I mean, officers have made a recommendation based on what we have before us. I think that the lighting report dealt with a worse case scenario in effect and was still found to be acceptable. Obviously, you know, officers and members can make a further judgement on this. I think the difficulty with the worst case scenario is that you'd have to be dealing with an example of storage of containers or any other variant of that because other elements of storage could be placed on here. It's more difficult than dealing with a building that has its permission and its own right on a particular location within the site because of the transitory nature of that. So I don't think officers would be minded to agree in terms of the adequacy of the lighting report by virtue of the conclusion that you see presented today.
Thank you. Before I open this up to the committee, I've got a couple of questions. Could you go back to the slide showing the three containers and the light? Yeah, that one there. The application's for eight-metre-high lamps, isn't it? It's crux. Sorry, yes, eight metres. Shipping containers are, I think I made note of it, 2.59. So the three on top of each other are 7.77. I don't know if that's perspective, but that looks higher.
I think it will be perspective, Chair, I think. What we have before us is, well, the application details reference eight-metre columns, which I've got a reserve slide that shows that. So I think this is a perspective case. Obviously, it's retrospective as well, so.
Could that be checked? Because obviously the lighting analysis is done on eight-metre columns. And if that is more than that, then that will create a different lighting pattern. I do accept that could be the perception, the angle, but there's only, what, 23 centimetres difference between the top of the top container and the light? Or there should be? That does look like more than that. But yes, it may be perception.
Chair, if I can find some other slides, maybe I can convince you otherwise, but...
If you've got any other dot pictures, that might be useful.
I think, Chair, if I just show one first and then I'll show another one. Sorry. So obviously that's a replication of the photograph. So if we ignore that one for now, except that's not my most helpful. But I was just demonstrating the point that the left hand diagram shows the eight metre as installed. So that is the elevation drawing submitted with the application. So hopefully that gives a degree of comfort. But if I can go to a... Just show another slide as well, Chair. Yeah, so I think, Chair, the right hand one is the zoomed version of the previous photograph. But the left hand one is probably more indicative of, you know, comparable height.
Thank you, yes. I would agree that on the left it looks more similar in heights. Yeah, okay, thank you. Another question relating to the changes on the green sheets. So we have the informative to advise of the removal of four of them, which is fine. How are we dealing with the other, I'm losing track, 11 that are being removed? Is that going to be an informative to have them switched off until they put an application in or to what?
Well, we do have a commitment from the applicant to do so. I think that's a fair comment to make on in terms of their commitment to us. Happy that we can, if Chair is happy that officers can come up with some wording to deal with the remaining, sorry, the other 11 that aren't considered this evening, similar to the informative we do have on. Obviously, well, it won't be that much similar because obviously the other four to be removed. But as an encouragement to turn off those lights as per the commitment, and obviously an encouragement of a future planning application, otherwise they'll be subject to ongoing enforcement because they're already in situ.
I'm not going to put this to a vote unless anyone has any strong disagreement. But is there a general consensus that that may be needed? Councillor Large?
I had a different question.
Oh, sorry. Right, so, sorry. Well, I'll come back to you. So with regards to an informative to having the new lights from the green sheet switched off, is everyone agreement that that would be needed? Okay, I'll take it that is accepted. Yep, thank you. I'll open this up to the committee. I think I've got a few more points, but yes, councillor Large.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, one moment. Councillor Armstrong, yes, if you could remove yourself. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question about the hours of the lights being on. And I quite expect there to be a condition on turning them off at some point because I think I've seen other applications come in for sort of industrial areas. And, you know, I don't think it's unreasonable to turn them off or to expect them to be turned off for a certain period over kind of the dead of night. And I know it was referenced in the report that you didn't feel that was needed and you've kind of briefly said today, but I just, I don't really understand why that condition isn't there. I would like to see it in there unless there's a really strong reason why not.
Thank you, councillor. Obviously, members are open to debate such a condition if there is some mind. I think that if I represent officer's view, which is the review, sorry, the view outlined within the officer report, is that the areas of use aren't restricted by this site. The very nature of this type of arrangement, because it is containers of a commercial industrial nature, there will inevitably be some night time movements, which is not restricted by the certificate because it couldn't be. It's not beneficial from a planning permission here. So I think that if members are minded to go down, I think the history is irrelevant. The operational requirements of this particular owner is also of relevance. It's something that we have floated with the applicant during the life of the application. But obviously, the response to that is reflected within the officer report that if there are movements of particular periods during the night, then the very nature of these columns is to provide security and a certain degree of luminance for operators on the site itself. Bear in mind that even if the light columns were turned off, for example, at 4, 5, 6am, whatever members might consider to be more appropriate, then because the use isn't restricted, you would still get localised lighting anyway from vehicles. And certain installations of columns may not even require planning permission. So movable columns, for example, may not require planning permission. So there are always alternatives to what is presented before us, which is a permanent fixture. So I think, as a report notes, it wasn't deemed necessary, relevant to the history of the site or also the operational needs. I think members would also have to have a mouthful of, well, what areas were they seeking to restrict as well? So we're happy to debate that if members are minded to. But as I say, the officer report doesn't advocate that areas of use restriction.
Thank you. On the, it's, you know, it's used as a container yard all the time. My understanding from the report, and again, apologies if I've misunderstood, is that there is a current vague application that says it's pending consideration for retrospective planning permission for the change of use of land to self-storage container yard. So it is sort of being used for that, well, it is being used for that at the moment, but that's not at its current permission. That is ongoing. You know, that hasn't been decided. So I don't know why we would then make our decision about the lighting based on it's a container yard because it hasn't been approved as a container yard. It's approved as something else.
Chair, I think I do need to, I will clarify that point. I'm trying to think of the best slide to show. So basically, that application is noted as a relevant, or it's a relevant application because it's in with us at the moment. So that deals with basically the southwestern corner of this red line, where there are no columns associated with that. So that is a use that fell outside of the certificate area. So that is subject to a separate planning application, which will be liable for conditions restricting areas of use as well as maximum height of any storage elements. So the columns aren't associated, well, even the yellow columns aren't associated with that application. So they are separate, albeit they're part of the same red line.
Are we okay with that, councillor Large?
Yeah, I think so. I would still prefer there to be hours of use restriction on the lighting. It's just where it is and, yeah, it just seems like it should be on there as a restriction. The neighbourhood plan has dark skies policy. I think that I would like to see that on there. But I appreciate that you may well still have lights going on at other times of the day because people might be going there. But I think it would be, that would be occasional. Whereas if they can be on all the time, it would just be all the time.
If you'd like to propose that as a condition, we'll invite you to come back and possibly put that to the committee once we've had this discussion.
Chair, can I just maybe help councillor Large a little bit? In front of the site, there's a petrol filling station and there's a yard behind it, which is, it stores lorries that go out with oil tanks. It's been there donkey's years. And that's illuminated all night, I believe, with very orangey-yellow sodium lights. There's no restriction on that yard and that petrol filling station. And when you drive along that road at night in the dark, that's what you see. The yellow lights of the adjacent petrol filling station and the yard behind it. You don't really see at all the lights that we're dealing with tonight. They're just behind it and in the background. So in terms of wanting to turn them off, the site's still going to be lit up by the yellow lights of the petrol filling station and its yard because that's the most bright thing there is in the street scene. And I think it'd be quite difficult to enforce turning off lights. That's going to be quite a tricky thing to do. But turning these lights off isn't going to protect the dark skies because the adjacent site literally lights the street up like a Christmas tree anyway. So it's not going to help if that helps with a bit of context.
To that point, I think we have some other slides as well as these ones to show lighting in the vicinity.
Yeah, Chair, this is a, well, a very close up slide of the petrol filling station, which, as Sarah said, does illuminate throughout the night and is predominant source, really in terms of Hyde Lane certainly, Slow Road as well, visible. So I think that in terms of lighting in the vicinity, obviously, even though we're dealing with a designated kind of rural area because it's outside of Defon and Salmons here, this is not a context devoid of lighting, I think is the main point. So as I was going across here, we've got other sources of light as well as in White Elm Road as well that you do perceive as you, well, you wouldn't be necessarily walking, but as you were driving along there. So whilst it is a rural area designation, these are not open rolling fields we're dealing with here. We've got quasi-industrial, commercial uses as well as lighting from residential uses and other uses in the vicinity. So, you know, officers felt that they would be a step too far to condition lighting to areas of use.
Thank you. Councillor Wilson?
Thank you, Chair. And I think I've had most of my questions answered. Well, one was about the restricted timings, which I don't think is practicable because it is a 24 hour operation, is it not? And you'll be having lorry movements during the night at 3 o'clock in the morning, apparently, I've heard. And thank you, Mrs Hill-Sanders, for the explanation about that, the petrol station, the Billericay Fuel Services in the front, because that's helped contextualise it for me. Because the question I actually had was, are there other sources of light pollution? And clearly there are. And are there street lights on Hyde Lane or?
There's no street lights, I'm sorry.
So it's dark other than BFS?
Yes. There are a few households that have got their own domestic lighting that is quite bright, just because that's what they wish to have.
That's what they like. Okay, that's cleared up. Thank you.
I think we've got some slides of some of the domestic housing. Is that correct?
This is not of Hales and Chair. We've got uses on the opposite side of White Elm Road, so to the west, which these were pictures taken, certainly the left hand one, as you pull out of a slow road. So, you know, these were not lights associated with Old Chase Farm. So as I say, that in combination with the previous one we showed at the petrol filling station, so this is not an area devoid of lighting, even though one may think so. Looking at on a Google plan, possibly this is dark and it actually is in reality. And as I say, that's supported by night time officer visits in that respect.
Thank you. Councillor Dobson?
Thank you, Chair. Again, a lot of my queries perhaps have already been answered. And obviously, the lighting, I note the response from PHPS had suggested sort of PIR activated lighting, which, whether the lighting is off, but obviously if it's then used, then it's a sensor that the lighting can come on. But I think, I'm guessing that the planning officers have gone through all this with the applicant and I'm content that you've done what you can to actually mitigate the light spill. And I just wanted to say that, I mean, as the ward councillor on the adjoining ward for, you know, Bicknaker, I have got a lot of concerns on the operation of this site and the impact, you know, the impact that the road traffic has on it. But I accept that this application is purely for the lighting. And I just want to say that I fully support, in this case, support the officer's recommendation for approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions from anybody? No? I think I've got one last one. What ecology assessment has been carried out to suggest that these 10 remaining lights are acceptable?
Chair, there's no ecology assessment submitted with the application. Obviously, the judgment is based upon the light spill levels and the proximity of trees. Obviously, this site has been, I don't want to use the word barren side, but it's been of this use for a number of decades now or a use that was devoid of what would have been its former woodland state. So there's been an element of, you know, this has been, this L shape or this T shape has been cut out of as a parcel in terms of being devoid of trees in the main. So that's a judgment based upon the spill levels, hence why we have the non-consideration of the 11.
Thank you. Any further questions from any committee members? No? Okay, so in that case, I move that the application 25/00218/Full, Old Chase Farm, Hyde Lane, Danbury be approved, subject to the conditions detailed on pages 17 to 18 of the agenda pack and the amendments on the green sheet and also the additional notes. Point of order? Yes, sorry. Point of order, sorry. Was that condition supposed to be dealt with before we went to vote? Correct. Thank you for pulling me back up on that one. Councillor Large, would you like to put forward a condition or a proposal for a condition?
I think ultimately, no. I kind of disagree in principle that, like, you're still adding more lights to the area. So, you know, that will have an impact. But I can also appreciate that, kind of on balance, that probably that argument isn't enough. So, yeah, no, I wasn't going to put a rate of condition.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Highland. I should have come back to that. I did say I would. So I move the application 25/00218/Full, Old Chase Farm, Hyde Lane be approved, subject to the conditions detailed on pages 17 to 18 of the agenda pack and the amendments on the green sheets and the further notes to the applicant that we discussed earlier. Do I have a second up? All those in favour? Thank you. All those against? Any extensions? No? Okay, thank you. That's obviously passed. So yes, that application has been approved. Thank you. Two more things. Item seven, planning appeals. We would have had the information on that. And the final thing, as most of the officers and committee members in this chamber will be aware, Keith is retiring at the end of this month. So this will be his very last planning committee meeting. I believe Keith may be the longest serving officer left on Chelmsford Council. Most certainly in the planning department at least. I did try to find out how long Keith had been around, but no one seems to be able to remember. Some say some of the planning applications he may have overseen could have included working with John Johnson on Shire Hall back in the 1780s. Also the cathedral, then a lowly parish council back in the 1500s. Rumours also suggest Keith gave permission for the Bronze Age residents to build their enclosure of Smithwood Lions. But I think that might be stretching it a bit. I don't know. In all seriousness, I know personally that I've learnt a lot from you, that the, learnt from you that planning is about balance. It's not black and white. Decisions can be difficult and it's perfectly reasonable to sometimes come to different views when presented with the same evidence as we give different weights. to sometimes come to different views when presented with the same evidence, as we give different weights. Sometimes decisions are hard to make, but as a committee, we are here to make them. And with your guidance through the years, this committee has made one hell of a lot of decisions. So myself, and I know the previous chair, Janetta, along with the members of this committee and members of this committee through the years, would genuinely like to thank you for your service and guidance and also your patience with us. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the meeting closed at 7:51. Thank you. Training, yes.